A meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. Nice warm day. We need a bunch of them. A roll call, please.
Sandy Coufo?
Here.
Crystal Regan?
Here.
Kristi Hilton?
Here.
Arty Bryson?
Here.
Cindy Valentine?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Mark Fisher?
Here.
Okay. First, I'd like to amend the agenda. And under New Business Seven, discuss workload coverage in the Building Department. I'd like to have a discussion with the board on that. That's my motion, you got support? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Alright, moving to Bill's payable.
Make a motion for Bill's payable in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none. All, oh, roll call, yeah, roll call, huh, getting ahead of myself.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Yes.
Sandy Coufo?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Usually we've been putting the supervisor's report next, but I'll follow the agenda and open it up for public comments. I'd probably be answering a few questions in my supervisor's report. Go ahead. You gotta state your name and address.
My name's Edward A. Bauer III. My address is ninety-six, ninety-six oh-one Doty Highway, Perseverance Island, Clay Township, Michigan. I'm here to make the board aware of a problem that we're having. And I'm gonna try to make sure it's less than the three minutes it's allowed. In two thousand and ten, I filed a complaint against my neighbor for open trespass. He built a shed on my property. In two thousand and thirteen, I apologize, I'll back up, two thousand and ten, I have two letters from your city attorney demanding that the Building Department investigate this matter immediately. They're in the public file in that office. And in two thousand and thirteen, the building inspector closed my case out. These are your documents. Without any notification to me. Now, I wanna bring the board's attention. My neighbor is Andy Uzstan, U-Z-S-T-A-N. He's one of the largest builders in Oakland County, specifically in the city of Rochester, where your building inspector, who signed this, also has a job. Therefore, I was a nice guy with my neighbor in two thousand and thirteen. My wife got cancer, I had to go down to Florida. I wanted her out of the Michigan weather. I came back, and we kissed and made up. I'll say it that way. When I came back three weeks ago, the police had to come, which I'm embarrassed about. My neighbor put brick pavers all on my property. I came in here, and I'm asking the city council to reopen my complaint that was closed out without my knowledge. If you look in the files, I never got a letter. If you go into my off, if you go into your file and look at my property at ninety-six oh-one Doty Highway, there is nothing in it. I was here in this office with Mr. Bryson, I spoke to him last week Monday. I'm very upset about it. I apologize for being upset, I've owned this property for forty years, I built it. I can show you my original permits that Clay Township signed off on when I built the property. I'm very passionate about this property, I love it. And I, I'm very appalled that the building inspector, quote unquote, this is in your file, it says, "Met with Andy, October thirteenth. Everything is okay, case closed, Sid Brown." And I never even got notice. I don't know how anybody can, you know, think that this is okay. And then, he's taking more property from me today. I'm sorry, we live on a small island, there's two houses. And I was in Florida, and I came back. I can show you the surveys, we have two surveys. His sheds on my property, I'm asking this council to immediately condemn his shed. He's got three one-hundred-pound propane tanks on my property, those are considered bombs. And I apologize, I ran over in my time here, but I, I, I'm just to the point that I don't know what to do. If you look at your file on Uzstan, who is my neighbor in Goose Bay, you'll see it's almost a quarter inch thick. If you go to pull my file, it has nothing in it. I can't even understand how that's possible.
Hey Ed, first I gotta apologize to you for not being able to see you last week. I was in the weeds. And I appreciate you coming tonight. And I, I actually went by your place yesterday, and...
You should've stopped there, I was there.
Okay. I, I know it's challenging there with all the water.
It's very challenging, I put a hundred and sixty sandbags out, I filled them all up myself, and I gotta put another hundred and sixty out.
And, and I know how, you know, I understand how people are passionate on those out islands, 'cause it's paradise out there, so...
All I'm saying is, I want justification. You, you know, in your own file, again, Arty, you'll see pictures of his wind generator that fell on my house. And Sid saw this stuff before, and I just don't understand how a building inspector can allow this thing. And I apologize if I'm saying something wrong here, I'm out of school.
Speak your mind.
But your building inspector, in your file, was on the island, took pictures, met with him, not with me, never even once called me, according to your own notes, I don't understand how that's allowed.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
That's all I was trying to say, is I would like you, if this board would just reopen this, I know it's old, and I apologize again, but and I don't mean to take up your time.
It's alright, thanks Ed.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, good evening, my name is Ron Kruger. I live at seven-three-four-one Ed Lane. Just a couple of comments real quick, I won't take up all your time also. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the supervisor, I think you done a great job providing the sand and the sandbags. I know it's been stressful, and I know there's been times when you ran out, but you're always working on it, you always got it to us, so I just wanna say thank you very much. And having said that, I'd like to thank our fire department. Every time we've gone, my wife and I have gone into the fire department to get the sandbags, or the bags themselves. Fire department been just super nice, very polite, very professional, asked for our identification, which I appreciate them doing, and did just a fabulous job, so my hat's off to our fire department, they did a great job. The only question I had is, is there any recourse when your neighbors don't sandbag? I know that's probably the question of the day. I've sandbagged from the canal all the way up to the road, now the water's hitting the road for my neighbor, 'cause he hasn't taken any action. I don't think you have to answer that now, but if you could let me know if there's something...
I'll, I'll be addressing that in my supervisor's report somewhat.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's, that's one of the big questions. High water isn't easy, it's a challenge.
Absolutely. And lastly, I've seen that our, our police department is deputized by the Sheriff's Department to enforce waterways. I think that's an excellent idea, and my hat's off to the police department also.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other public comments this time?
My name is Diane Miller, seventy-three-eleven B Lane. And I also went to the fire department today to get bags, and I was also very appreciative of the fire department. And I talked to the young man who was there, and I know that this has gotta be a great burden on the fire department to do this. And I'm wondering if I can organize some volunteers to man the table, to hand out the sandbags, would that be helpful to you? Or is that something that we can't do, or...
We can look into it.
I don't know. And another suggestion I have, is there any way that maybe, you know, with the demographics of Clay Township, a lot of us are all seniors, and we have a lot of seniors that need help with sandbagging. Is there any chance we can get some non-violent criminals out of San Clara County Jail and come and fill sandbags?
Is there such a thing? Oh, I didn't...
Well, sure, there's a lot, there's, there's, there's a lot of guys that are locked up because they haven't paid their child support, or they haven't paid a ticket, or something like that.
Yeah, community service people.
Or, or even, you know, I mean, we're paying them, giving them three hots and a cot, so why not put them to work? I mean, I don't know, just a suggestion to help some of our, some of our senior citizens that are disabled that need some help. And, you know, if I can help to organize some volunteers to man the station, you know, man the table for sandbags, I would be more than willing to, to try and organize people to be there, check IDs, and because if, if these guys have to go out on a run...
That's the thing, if they gotta go on a run...
And then people wanna get sandbags, and then they can't, so... And, and I know it's a great burden on these guys to keep running back and forth all the time, so I would be willing to, I would be willing to try and organize something to help the fire department out, if that is something that can be done.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you attempted to contact a school?
Yeah, I, I got an update on that.
Oh, you have an update on that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll hold off.
Any other public comments? Hearing none. Thank you for the public comments, by the way. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of June seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, check reports, a communication which was a thank you from Diane Miller to our building clerk Cindy Babish, and there are no requests.
Support. Motion and support. Do we have any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Alright, next is our supervisor's report.
That's not the supervisor's report I have.
It grew last weekend.
Show them yours, and it's on the back.
What? Okay. I don't have to tell anybody in this room, the water's high and is consuming most of my time. Since our last meeting, we've had visits with Army Corps of Engineers, county and state emergency management, and we've been, you know, every, every week, it seems like we have more and more challenges with this high water. Like I just said, it ain't easy. And water usually wins, just ask the Grand Canyon, you know, a little stream made that gully. But anyhow, since our last meeting, water's up between two and three inches. And literally, it, it seems like every half inch it goes up, we get a whole new flock of people calling us with issues and concerns, and it's, it's, and frustrations, and believe me, I, I understand it, and we're dealing with them as they come, as best as we can. Last week, I think it was last week, they all blend together, or the, I can't remember, what day did I get the, the ten thousand bags from Corps of Engineers? It was last weekend, like, two...
Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, it was Tuesday, last week. Picked up ten thousand bags of, from the Corps of Engineers, because we got seventy thousand just a few days before that, and they, they were gone. And, and actually, the day before I picked those up, we ordered a hundred thousand more sandbags. I was able to get a little bit of reduced price on those, and they just came today. So that's good. Still may, I, I got, I'm gonna be calling the Corps tomorrow, still may be, might be able to get another ten to nineteen thousand bags. So far, we're at three hundred and eighty-five thousand ba, or, I'm sorry, four hundred today, four hundred and eighty-five thousand bags that, that we're going through. And we're also going through about seventy-four yards of sand a day. You know, we can only get so much sand delivered a day, when it's out, it's out. I couldn't get sand delivered on Sunday, and I, you know, these people need a day off too. And I, I definitely wanna give out major kudos, and I wanna recognize them, once we get through this, to the Pizora as a blue water material. I mean, we buy the sand from them, but they're actually doing the trucking for free. So it, that's a, that's a...
That's a big deal.
That's a big deal. And so it's, you know, we're doing a gravel train load a day over on the mainland, and you know, three to four duly pickup trucks over on the island. And so that's, that's a, a lot of consumption out of their, out of their job, and, you know, they gotta make a buck, and they are just slam busy too. I, last week, I was, I was trying to do some shopping on these water diverters, these tubes. They fill with water and you use them in lieu of sandbagging. And I came across this one website, Airee, A-I-R-E Industries. And I, I started texting with them, or chatting with them, and I asked them about government deals. And they said, "Sure," and I'll tell you what, it was the best deal I could find on the internet for these things. So I thought the township could buy them and pass them along to, to people at, at a huge savings. And we put it out, a hundred footer, it goes for three hundred and twenty-four dollars for a hundred-foot, twelve-inch tube. Three hundred and twenty-four dollars plus shipping. The seventy-five footer is two sixty-six, and the fifty footer is two oh-eight. And that's probably half of what you would find from a lot of other companies, or more. I mean, I found, saw someone that was so expensive, it was like eighteen hundred dollars for a hundred foot. So I put it out on social media, and I got two hundred orders. So this is something I'm kinda dealing with myself, and it's a little overwhelming in itself, communicating with any, all these people. Put in an order Thursday, and, and I've been, every day, even before that, the Wednesday before, I was in communications with this company. And they've been trying to fulfill the order, I told them, you know, since Thursday, over the weekend, I probably have orders for another hundred. And they're working on filling the order, and we probably won't see, I, I, in fact, I emailed most of the people on the first order. We probably won't see these until after the Fourth of July. And I asked anybody if they wanna cancel their order or not, 'cause I have a lot of other people that want them. Not one person said we wanna cancel them yet. I mean, the demand is huge, and I thought, from the township perspective, we're saving our residents money by doing this. And it's just that much less sandbags that we're, we may have to provide too, in sand. Things are pretty cool, they fill up with water, they're heavy. You use them, you have to kinda secure them behind and in front, because they, they're round, they will roll if waves hit them or something. But I would just throw a sandbag every ten, fifteen feet or so. And I, I've been telling people, any technical questions or anything about the product, you gotta go to the website or call them, which a lot of people have. So anyhow, last, our emergency management actually did an assessment of the township last week. And the, on primary residents, they weren't really looking at garages or sheds or anything. And they have a rating of affected, what was it? Help me out, Sherri, there was affected...
Affected, minor, major, and destroyed.
Yeah, affected, minor, affected, major, and destroyed. And we didn't have, as far as they, they, they told us, we don't have anybody affected, minor, or, or major. We do have properties that are affected, like water in the, in the crawl space, and that sort of stuff, wet yards and everything. But as of, as of the, the, the people, they, or the, the three or four teams that went out in the township last two, or last week, did not find any of major or minor affected primary structures. Having a lot of neighbors complaining about, they're being flooded out by their neighbors. And the real, the real hard part about this is fifty, I can't remember, it's fifty-three or fifty-eight percent of the property of the township's owned by the state. And the state's done nothing for mitigation of flooding. And like the one gentleman said, you know, I, I protected my house, there's a couple people here as best I can, and the water's coming up to the road, and over, and back in, and you know, it's causing flooding on their own private property. I've, I've, I've actually, I, I talked to our DNR Lieutenant, is charged for the DNR Emergency Management in southeast Michigan, and they still don't have an answer for me yet. I don't know if I'll ever get one, 'cause they probably don't want to answer the question if and what they're going to do. Because, you know, it's such a monumental thing. Now, we've had a discussion on the board about, can we force people to sandbag on someone else's private property? And we, as a board, and correct me if I'm wrong, talked about, you know, we couldn't, it would be hard to enforce, 'cause we have a hundred and forty miles of coastline. And there, there would be no way, okay, we're gonna go and sandbag all these people, there's no way that we, the township has the resources to do that. And so it would be something that we wouldn't be able to really enforce rightly. I know Algnac's doing it in some other cities. Algnac has five affected properties. And that, you know, that's not a, not a real, real issue to, to accomplish. But if we had eight hundred people, and I'd probably be close to that, six hundred, eight hundred properties are affected, other, other neighbors. You know, with our resources, how could we, how could we do that? I, I couldn't even think of a private contractor that could, could do that. So, I mean, if the board wants me to take a different stance, we can, but I get a lot of phone calls, and I explain it to people, and most of them understand. And then, how, how do you fix some and not others, and prioritize it? It's, it's challenging, let's see, let's put it that way. County Road Commission has been work, working very hard. They had really two really bad affected roads from water over the roads, and they got most of those two roads taken care of, and they're going around and fixing other spots. I know there's, there's a lot of roads with water over it. They're primarily looking at, at the deepest and the worst sections first. Anchor Bay Drive, Colony, Marina, Riverside, and they got most of those out of control. Right now, they're pretty much addressing anything that's six inches or deeper in, in sections, and, and to try, try to get a, a, those in control. So are they gonna be able to get them all? I don't know, they've been busting their butt on it, and, and I've been, you know, we've been helping them out as we, as we can. I do know of two structures that DTE actually cut power to, because it was, I think they were both boat houses or, or abandoned homes or something, that, you know, they had a, a, a live feed going in, and, you know, they thought it was too dangerous, so they, they just pulled the service right out. Lots of complaint about boat rate waves. I just wanna mention, we did have our own police boat out all day Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday from ten to six. And then we, we also had limited patrol with our fire boats on Saturday, and they were all, all out on Friday too. Been looking for some no-wake legislation for our channels and rivers, and we thought I had some momentum and steam going forward. This past week, I haven't been able to, I, I made a few phone calls today, and, and haven't really gotten that warm and fuzzy feeling if there's anything that's gonna happen. I, I requested people send me videos or pictures of wake damage, and I did get several of those, and thank you for the people who did that. I forwarded to the governor's office and the state legislatures. And basically, I've been asking them, you know, here's a problem staring us right in the face, and, you know, government, government's not doing anything about it. You know, why are we even here? Why do we have a government? I mean, it, it's basically in the state, state hands. And I've been petitioning the county for more backing, I, I've gotten a little bit, but not a lot of bit, support, let's put it that way. And to, to, you know, to make a temporary no-wake in the, in the rivers or channels, or make it, okay, temporary no-wake if the water is X amount high, and when it drops down, it would go, it would go away, something like that. The only person, or the only way to do it right now, is the, the governor would have to do an executive order, and, and she's not gonna consider that just yet. I have some state legislatures, I asked them if they could do it legislatively, and, and that's what I was working on last week. And they're, they're checking into it, the possibility, and, but I'm not sure where that's going, like I said. And I did wanna mention too, where's Diane? We, I did find out today, we, we do have, you know, we put it out for some volunteers to help sandbags and everything, and it's starting to get more organized. I know Woodside is going to be helping three families in the township, and, and we're organizing, or they're organizing that, but we're working with them. And also, the Algnac Robotics Club is gonna be helping five families sandbags. So I've been, a little bit of communications, tomorrow there's gonna be a lot more communications from me with them, helping them get organized. So, like I say, I know there's a lot of people frustrated on this high water, I totally understand it. I got water where I live across the road, have to wear boots to get to the mailbox. I did wanna mention on Javi Nooner, it was this past Friday, and kudos to our fire department and police department. It was, I thought it was gonna be busy, or truthfully, with the hot weather, but it, it was still pretty steady. How many boats, three thousand, you think, two, three thousand? Yeah, around in there, I didn't find a, a count. I know we had fourteen transports, emergency transports to the hospital, mostly smashed hands and, and limbs. We had a finger cut off. And a lot of it was due to, a storm came up and blew all the boats altogether, and they were smashing together, and everyone, and everything. And I'll say two things, people, pay attention to your sto, to your phones when a storm alert's coming up. You know, kinda check out how your neighbors are anchored up, and, and maybe you should throw a stern anchor out if, if that's the case. And don't use your body parts as a bumper when, between your boats gliding, you know, use a bumper. I think that's what caused most of that. And Chief Rose said he was out there the next day, he even saw a bunch of boat parts and stuff and pieces laying on the bottom of the river from boat smashing. Now, you guys wanna add anything to that, or is that... About sums it up?
Transports were non-residents too.
All, all fourteen transports were non-residents. I know we found a driver's license from someone from Hastings. Okay. Colony Main Water Project is still not totally done, we're working out the final stages. Again, there's been challenges there with the high water. And we're, we're kinda wrapping it up, there's a few concerns about alarm systems and/or sprinkler systems that got damaged during the waterline installation, and a few, and some landscaping that needs to be done. I'm still working on the third bridge on Anchor Bay Drive, and like I say, once that's done, they're going to, the plan is to pave Anchor Bay Drive where it's all tore up, 'cause that road really turned into gravel, basically, in a lot of places. Other than that, there are two, like I say, we have a ton of rec programs, and if you like us, if you're on Facebook, you can like us on Clay Township Parks and Rec, they're all listed there, and, or call us up, we can give you details on a whole slew of stuff, so... Thank you. I'm sorry I got long, but all good, important stuff. So, under unfinished business, we don't have anything. New business, we have to set a public hearing for our police, fire, and garbage fees. And we, I'll make a motion, if that's okay with the board, that we set it for August fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven o'clock. It would be at our next, our August fifth meeting here.
Support.
Did I get support?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on that? I just wanna tell everybody that there's no change, the police and the fire and garbage, there's no change in any of it. no change in any of it. They're not going up or down. I was just gonna say the same, so. It's a formality we have to do, have the public hearing, and then we can vote on it as a board. Okay, so we have motion and support. All in favor of setting the public hearing for police, fire, and garbage, August 5th. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have Harson's Island Fire Department contribution from the old club for a tank fill. We have to formally accept that. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Harson's Island Fire Department contribution from the old club for tank fills at fifty dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. And that's going to go in a line item to be spent on the, on the Harson's Island Fire Department. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next we have a request for fireworks permit on July 6th at sixteen sixty South Channel Drive.
I'll make a motion to approve fireworks at sixteen sixty South Channel Drive on July 6th, provided the, the fire chief has no issues with their setup over there as usual.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Does this one have a rain date? No, this one doesn't.
Nope.
Okay. All right, any discussion? So the motion is allowing the permit, as long as our Chief Rose gives the blessing. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have fireworks permit for August 12th at eighty-five forty-three Marsh Road. And this is a permit from the Elgin Mac Baptist Church. They have a big piece of property out there, and how many times have you done this? Three, four, five each times?
With your approval?
Yes.
Probably five.
Five, and without?
Well?
A few more.
Zero.
So, and we never had any, that I know of, any issues with it. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks for eight-five-four-three Marsh Road, August the 12th, the Baptist Church property.
Support.
You wanna amend that, as long as it gives our Chief Rose blessing?
Amended to approval by Chief Rose, Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. This is just way too easy. I've been talking too much, too. All right, fifth, Parks and Rec request for Detroit Lions trip thirty, for three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the plan is, this will be recouped for when we sell tickets for this event. I've actually gone to a couple of these, and they, they sell out every time. Who are we playing on this one?
Chargers.
The Chargers. Okay, I'll probably get a couple tickets to it. So anyhow, it's a request for Parks and Rec to do the bus trip costing thirty-eight seventy-five.
I'll make a motion that we support and approve the Detroit Lions Park and Rec trip for the amount of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. And that is Sunday, September 15th, if anyone will be interested in. Next we have the tentative agreement that with the deep, or the wire department, local and the operating engineers union, local three twenty-four, and in on it, we put basically all the changes, and I think it's a win-win contract. We came to it in two meetings, right? And I'm looking for...
Also in line with all our other department contracts?
Yep, yep. Right in line with everybody else. I'm looking for approval on the, a ton of agreement with our water department.
I'll make a motion to approve our tentative agreement for 2019 to 2023 with our water and sewer department, local three twenty-four.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. All in favor, signify. Oh, nope, we gotta do roll call.
What, wait, how many, how many employees do we have?
Eight, I believe, in our water department.
Eight good ones. I concur.
Any other questions? And again, we're getting away from the post, or the retirement, or the pension defined benefit pension plan, and we're getting into a defined contribution, basically a 401K that will help the township out significantly in years to come. And, but we had to start somewhere and get rid of that defined benefit. So, any more discussion?
This is for the next...
Four years.
Four years?
Yep. They gave everyone an option to go three years or four, and everyone's taking the four-year option, so. Have one more to do still is the command, police command, so hopefully we'll have that for our next meeting.
I know John isn't here, but you know what the seniority level is of those eight employees?
All eight? I mean, we have...
Ten years, five years?
We have one that's been there a year, and some are like fifteen years.
Say they average between ten and fifteen.
And most of them are, are licensed as a operator.
So they have...
Or utility operator.
So they have levels?
Oh, yeah.
Level of...
Yep. You have to get licenses and then state, state approved. So, they just don't let anybody cut into the wire system. All right, roll call vote.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupot?
Yes.
Crystal Rigg?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, I'd like to have a discussion on our, the, basically the work coverage in our, our billing department. I, I know we had one tonight, someone complaining about issues in our billing department, and in other board meetings, too. Feel like a lot of balls are being dropped, and I'd like to bring it to the board's attention. Maybe we can come up with a solution. I do, we do have backup building inspector who we hired, but I'm not sure, how long ago was it?
Over a year.
About a year ago, and Gary, he's been working out great, and a backup electrical inspector, Anthony, who also's been working up great, and we've just been, I don't know, in my mind, having a lot of dropped balls, so. I'd like to open up a discussion on that.
So how many hours a week is the current building inspector putting in?
Well, he's, and it's frustrating, you know, he doesn't really...
Supposed to.
Huh?
Supposed to.
Well, he's supposed to be available three days a week in the afternoon, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We're busy. We're not only busy with, with building and building issues and projects going on, we're also busy with dealing with complaints, getting high water stuff and, and everything. And in my mind, it's, it's pretty tough for a guy doing that, like I say, he, he's been averaging two, two and a half afternoons a week. And unbeknownst to me, actually, I just found out Friday, that I guess he notified us Wednesday that he wasn't gonna be here this week at all. And so I never get any notification if there's vacations, or if he takes days off to go golfing, or, or days off to go to the dentist, which seems to be happening a lot.
How many, how many, he's part-time, so how many hours a week is that?
Well, he's, he doesn't get paid by the inspection, or by, the hourly rate is by inspection. And, you know, we really don't know how many hours that he's working.
Is, is he on ten ninety-nine or W-2?
Is it...
He's an employee.
Yeah, is it W-2?
W-2?
Yep.
What out of ten ninety-nine if he gets paid by inspections? Just an option.
Yeah.
Something to consider.
Yeah, I'm not sure why, why it was set up. Like I say, I'm not sure. I think he became the, the current one, became the billing inspector fifteen years ago or so, ten, ten, fifteen years ago. I'm not sure how long. But I know he works part-time at Rochester, too.
So he doesn't have a contract?
No, no, there's no contract. We have an agreement on how he gets paid by the inspection, and that's all that I could find.
How many hours or days do the other two inspectors get on a weekly basis?
I'm not sure on hours, but they're available for inspections Monday through Friday, and actually sometimes on like a Saturday morning also.
Is there availability more than what we are getting? Can we use them more?
I'm sorry, what?
Is there availability open to using them more?
Oh, yeah, we have. In fact, Gary, he just called me. He was out on the field till about seven o'clock tonight doing inspections, because absent a sit, you know, Gary's filling the shoes, and he just got done tonight. And, you know, and Anthony's been doing, I know Anthony was on an inspection Thursday. I'm not sure if he did any today or, or, or Friday.
So, and then their inspections, they can do the full gamut of inspections, building, footings, electrical, and all that other stuff?
Who, who?
Just talking about Anthony and Gary.
Oh, yeah. Anthony is licensed, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, he's licensed to do electrical plan reviews.
Mm-hmm.
And Gary's a certified billing official, and part of that is plan reviews, footings, all, everything that a billing official would, you know, does.
And we have a increase in buildings, or building permits is one of the reasons that we're, we're falling behind, or not necessarily that...
Our billing department is probably the busiest it's been ever.
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 Plus, lots of, lots of issues with, like, you know, of old decisions that are coming back to bite us, like, you know, Ed has, and, and several others. We have a lot of complaints now, especially with the high water. Some of them valid, some of them aren't, but, you know, they have to be inspected, and actually, I, I've been doing a lot of it myself, and, and, you know, I'm not a billing inspector, and, I mean, I have, I can give suggestions. I have a pretty good idea. But, you know, it's not the supervisor's job to know the billing code. You know, it's our inspector's job to know what the code is.
So do you, do you know if we're behind on permits right now, today?
Um...
And, and is there a time limit on when we inspect?
Well, I, I'll tell you what. I, I hear, oh, you know, I, you know, I needed to get an inspection and nobody showed up, and it's frustrating, and, you know, I, I don't like to, I, I really have a problem when, I don't want to be a speed bump. I don't want Clay Township to be a speed bump for any project. And, and that's why we hired actually Gary and Anthony to backfill, because before that, we could only do a footing inspection three days in the afternoons, and you know how it is to, you know, you're doing the footing, especially in this high water, you gotta, you gotta dig pour and pour right away.
That's fifty-two days of rain.
And, and, you know, to, I mean, I know we're very behind on, on, on footings and that, that type of a thing.
How was our documentation handled on permits when they come in? Is there a time sheet, a timeline, a schedule, when this should be done, when that should be done, when the next one in line is supposed to be done, or is it just a stack of paper?
It's very lax. I'll admit, there has not been any policies and procedures in our billing department from day one that I could find.
Well, I think we ought to go and autocorrect.
Well, and, and I, I emailed the board what I thought we should do, but, and, and that, but still, that's not going to change our, our backlog and our...
Well, I think it will.
Ah, and our demand. I don't know. But, you know, that's why I brought it up for discussion.
Do we actually have a billing official? Because I went back in the minutes, and I can only find where we've, the board, not we've, because it's back a few years, where the board had appointed Sid a building inspector. Has something happened since then that I wasn't able to find that you're aware of?
No. We went back in the minutes, and we, we found, it was in the nineties, where the board at that time appointed Sid as our building inspect, as a billing inspector. Nowhere in the documents did I find where he's the billing official.
So we technically don't have a billing official?
Well, I don't know. He's been acting as billing official for quite some time. I don't know if you could claim that.
Okay.
But, so I, I'm not real sure on that.
What's the difference, building inspector, billing official? What's, what's the difference?
It'd be like a department head, wouldn't it?
He's just the department head?
No, well, a billing inspector goes out in the field and inspects if, if the job's performed right. A billing official, Gary, you wanna come up here for a second, please? I'm sorry, I put you on the spot.
Well, here's another one, too. Do we actually have a billing official position in our procedures?
Well, that's what I'm trying to, to answer. A billing official does plans, right? Choose plans and...
Well, they oversee the billing department, for sure.
What's that?
They oversee the billing department.
Right.
It is a state requirement, actually, that every city or township does have a billing official, someone to answer to any of the problems that may occur. On a community like this, the role would be probably very small. Wouldn't be something that would be a day-to-day situation, but if a problem occurred, then there would be someone held responsible for that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, is that, okay, that's what a billing official does.
Okay.
So it's not one independent, that's not one full job. It's just like...
No.
...a title you're given as a billing inspector?
Yeah, just as a requirement of the state.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So typically, who would be in charge of communication with residents as far as writing letters for whether it be an enforcement issue, or a violation issue, or an approval issue? Who typically would write those letters to residents to respond to them?
Well, that could be defined by the board, by you guys, as far as who you would want to have in charge of that.
Typically, it's somebody that knows code, though, correct?
It's always helpful.
Yeah. And that's kind of an issue, another issue we have, is Cindy is getting a little frustrated because a lot is being thrown at her desk, and she's not certified in code. She's doing the best she can, and she's kind of getting banter from both sides at times, but there's nobody else to write those letters.
Yeah. Who's signing the letters?
I believe Sid Stamp is signing the letters.
Oh, Sid Stamp is, okay.
So Gary, you probably, as a backing up to my original question on time schedules and timing and timelines and when things are, do you have any forms such as that, you know, going down a list or something on the board? Let's do this one, this one?
Well, there is...
Something simple?
There isn't, but if you look around, there is a lot... There isn't, but if you look around, uh, there is a lot of building going on in Clay Township. Um, everywhere you look, there's something going on. Is it acceptable to make someone wait two weeks for an inspection? Absolutely not. Uh, should it be done in a timely manner, and the code, code calls for it to be done in a timely manner? Uh, and that's, depending on the workload, depending on, uh, the number of personnel would dictate that, but also the ve, the availability would also, uh, aid in that. When things are busier, you stay out there longer. Um, you know, when it's slower, you don't have to work as hard or as long or as many days, uh, but the idea is to get out there and get those inspections done in a timely manner.
So you grab, when you come in, you grab a list and you go?
Yeah, yeah, right now, I'm just backfilling, uh, but I'll, I'll get inspections, uh, emailed to me, uh, and then I'll know where I'm going, you know, after work.
Typically, they'd be scheduled through the office, and that's not being really done right now.
What is the typical wait time that we're seeing for residents right now? Like, two weeks is excessive, where, where are we sitting at right now?
I, I don't have that.
You know?
Not off the top of my head.
No, and Cindy's on vacation this year.
Yeah.
Well, I've seen cases where, uh, such as footings, where, um, they were, you know, the, the concrete is ordered, the footing was measured, or not measured, and, and then the, and then they see, and show trucks up, and it still hasn't been inspected. What do you do in a case like that?
It does happen.
Yeah, we don't, right?
Especially, especially with our soil conditions, uh, sometimes, they don't have a choice. If they dig it, they've got to be pouring concrete right behind that shovel, or else it's caving in, and it's a total loss. Um, and the cost to, to actually then shore up that footing, uh, gets excessive, especially when you're talking about an accessory structure, and that's really where you deal with that type of, just trench-type footing. But, um, no, you know, you hope that they've done their documentation, um, you know, we've got to be understanding of the situation, uh, we've got to be friendly to our residents, to our businesses, to our contractors. Our job is to support them, to make sure that their, uh, jobs are successful, so...
What other cases would, uh, other than footings, uh, fall under what you just described?
As far as...
As far as a contractor doing the work and not getting a, uh, a sign-off on the permit?
Well, you know, there should be no excuse, I mean, in, I've been doing inspections for over eighteen years now, and there has been occurrences that, yes, take that drywall off that wall, we want to see, we're here to make sure that those buildings, those structures are safe. Um, so sometimes, we've got to play hardball, there's no doubt.
Board, I'm gonna take another spin off of our discussion, and I, I'm not so concerned with the time that people are waiting for inspections. I have a couple of concerns, um, when I was involved in the dangerous, uh, buildings, and, and looking at some of those permitting, and, and some of the time that's going on, so we've sort of identified what we call an, an open, uh, an open item action list. So those are things that maybe permits haven't been closed out, maybe we don't have final, we've got temporary C of O, and not final C of O, um, various things like that. Um, so what I've seen, um, and, and is, is a list that continues to grow. Um, so it's not just the permits and just the inspections, it's, it's the backlog of issues that the department is dealing with. Um, I think code enforcement is, is mixed into this equation as well. Uh, we've done a good job of hiring code enforcement officials, after our last one, um, resigned or, or retired, if you will. So, what I would suggest is, um, you know, we evaluate, uh, as a board, um, our department in whole, and let's make sure that, um, that we have clear identifiable, identifiable objections. Um, I, I'd like to make sure that we have, uh, an accurate job description of what's required, um, by Clay Township for various building inspectors and our building official. Um, so I, I think it's incumbent on the seven of us to offer our insights and support, um, not only for, um, the personnel we currently have working for us, but also for our residents.
Does the state gi, give, uh, the billing officials, electricals, officials, et cetera, a job description, or with the licensing, I mean, you're responsible for X and Y?
It's very possible that they do already, but...
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I could research that for you.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, we can, we also do a benchmarking, uh, see, see what other municipalities have, as far as their, their, um, job descriptions are concerned?
Well, I'm sure we can get some job descriptions, but, um...
And procedures?
Well, I, I've been working on the procedures, um, and like I say, I, um, it's been very lax, and, uh, in my mind, there's been a lot of balls dropped, um, you know, people calling in for final inspections, where, where we go and look, and, you know, they, they, they call up, hey, I finished the work last night, um, we're set for a final inspection, and then we go look in, in the B S A, in the documentation, and, and it's already been approved. So how can that happen?
Mm-hmm.
When, 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 uh, you know, they're, they're just telling us, you know, we finished the, the work last, last night, um, or, or I've had, uh, I should say, I, the township, um, has, has had people, hey, you know, we've been waiting for an inspector to show up, and, and they, they haven't shown up, uh, but then when we go in there and look, it, it's been approved. Um, I mean, it, it's, it's an issue, and, uh, I, I, I think, um, it needs to be fixed sooner than, than later, uh, somehow, and, um, and again, like, the dangerous buildings, uh, you know, okay, we have dangerous buildings, but then someone, they'll, they'll, they'll get a permit to, uh, to take it off the dangerous building, and it's two, three years later, the permits gets renewed, and renewed, and renewed, nothing gets, and I can't...
It's not followed up on.
Right, it's not followed up on, we can't tear down a, a, a dangerous building with an active permit, so, you know, we're stuck, and meanwhile, we have a dangerous building sitting there for three years. Um, I, I have a hard, I mean, I, I lose sleep over it.
Well, now you got me kind of concerned, because now Gary's saying, it's by the state of Michigan, we have to have a building official.
Yeah.
And technically, we don't have a building official, we can say he's acting as a building official, but he's not, I mean, not by our board minutes, nothing that we could substantiate. Um, and then with all of this going on, that we were just talking about, I'm a little hesitant to keep Sid in that position, as well as with the investigation that Ed is asking us to reopen, but I, I feel we need to do something, because the state requires us to have an official.
Mm-hmm.
Just so you know, you had one in two thousand and ten, I have a letter right here from the Clay Township attorney to the building official, like...
Mike, is it, is it Mike Crass?
Yeah, Mike Crass, yeah.
It was from your attorney to him.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike Crass was two thousand and ten, and we looked in all the board minutes, we haven't, couldn't find anything, uh, naming anybody as a building official in the township.
Well, then that, that falls directly on our shoulders.
Yep.
So, we, us seven have, have some work to do, um, internally, and, and, and then, and then we can discuss matters with, you know, our department heads. But we, we certainly...
Sid, yeah.
Well, we certainly have some work to do first.
Well, so, so we should operate, let me ask you a, a question, so you think we should operate till our next meeting, which is two and a half of weeks away, without a billing official, knowingly, without a billing official?
I'm not comfortable with that.
And, uh, when we're state, the state requires to have a billing official? I, I, I have a hard time with that myself.
We could have, put someone as an acting billing official till we can get it sorted out.
Mm-hmm.
Get, uh, you know, job description, et cetera, et cetera, but make some progress, and then have a sit-down with, um, Sid Brown.
Are there certain qualifications or certifications that a billing official must hold?
Yes.
Do we have anyone else in the department qualified to fill that position with those requirements?
Gary. And, uh, and the only thing, he doesn't have, if, correct me if I'm wrong, he, he, he can't review electrical plans, is that right?
Oh, that's correct.
But Anthony can.
So we would have those bases covered?
Right.
Until we can really get down to the meat of it.
So we don't even know if a billing official designated has to be certified to review both of those objects, or criteria?
Yeah, they have to be certified.
Yeah, they do.
If you're a certified electrical inspector, then you can be certified for plan review. But Gary's building, he's not electrical.
So if, so if it was, he'd be a perfect candidate for the building official, then?
Mm-hmm.
Well, he is a building official, he just doesn't have electrical.
Well, he's not certi...
But Anthony has.
Anthony has electrical.
Well, we can't have two entities as a billing official.
No.
It should be one, that's what I'm getting at.
So you don't have to have... A billing official, it's more of an administrative, uh, position.
Right.
Um, a billing official has billing inspectors underneath him that, that they would oversee, uh, and don't have to have, really, they still have to have the credit hours, and, and get the certifications, uh, but they don't have to do that on a hands-on, day-to-day basis.
That's, that's what, that's the point I was getting, thank you, Gary.
And then if there was, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there is electrical plans that require electrical inspection, he would, Gary would, uh, forward that to Anthony for Anthony's stamp.
Or Sid.
Or Sid. I mean, we're not, we're not really doing anything with Sid, I, I don't think, right now, um, but, I mean, I, I have a problem that we now know that, we don't have, officially, we don't have a billing official right now, and we're required to. I mean, the, we went back as far as we could, and we, we have no board action on who is gonna be, uh, making someone our official billing official.
Does the current building inspector have those qualifications you just mentioned, Gary?
The current?
Yeah, do, do you know, or not?
Uh, as in Sid Brown?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Does anybody know?
I believe he does.
My concern currently is, as far as we were told last week, he was here for twenty minutes. I believe we found out he was on vacation because someone called in to reschedule their inspection, because he had told them he was on vacation. We need respots from our building official, we need someone to be here, we need someone to follow through with appointments that are scheduled, and we don't have that right now.
Well, Gary, don't, don't you pick up the slack when Sid can't, can't do it, between, between you and Tony?
We get sent over inspections, but I don't know if that's picking up the full slack, I, I don't know.
Well, we need to, we need to wrap our hands around that, you know?
We, we need to wrap our hands around a lot of issues.
Yeah.
He just leaves and goes on vacation, doesn't tell anybody.
Well, is one of them.
Yep, you bet.
And the workload.
Yeah.
I do know that I'm available a lot more than, than I get inspections on, I know that.
That's positive.
So...
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, what, what's...
So if we're behind, and there's more availability, can we schedule them more?
Sure.
I guess I'm confused as to why, why is it a problem when we have people able to go out and work?
I have a problem, we have some huge developments going on right now, in the, in the township, and without the town, without this board saying, this person is our billing official, you know, it, it opens us up for, for issues. And otherwise, we can just shut our, our billing department down for two weeks, uh, and I, I don't think that's an option, and I don't want, knowingly want to put our, our township in jeopardy of the issues.
Can't we make, can't the billing official temporarily enacting?
Sure.
Let's, can, I mean, Gary?
Um, if Gary would still be interested, we could certainly...
Yeah.
Do that, I, I, I don't feel comfortable leaving this meeting, not having one.
Right.
Unless we're closing our building department, quite honestly, so, um, and considering all the things that have come up with discussion that we need to look into, I, I don't feel good about the way things always were, is the way they should be, so...
Well, can we ask him if, if he's available, and then we'll do it right here tonight?
I think he is.
Yeah, so let's just move forward here.
I'm waiting for a motion.
It's been, Mr. Bauer has a letter from two thousand and ten.
Mm-hmm.
Two thousand and ten, nine years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So we just found out, now we're gonna pull the trigger like that?
We have to, it's a state law.
Does this affect any other positions in any negative ways? Are we taking anything away from anyone?
No, we're making an acting, an acting.
Pay benefits, I'm just asking.
Well, Gary just stated that he can't...
We're adding a title?
He, excuse, I'm sorry, Gary just stated that he can't be the building official because he don't have the certification, right?
He has the certification.
No.
Well, if we do a temporary, uh, I'll call it a promotion with Gary, into the building
official, it should be on a timeline until we can get, talk to, uh, the current building inspector, and see where he's coming from.
Yes, that's not a hard thing to do.
You know, if, if we're gonna be in compliance, we can do it for the next two weeks, right?
I would, I would say we, we need a month, at least.
A month, yeah.
I will make a motion to appoint Gary Pearl as our interim building official.
Yeah.
And Anthony as our electrical reviewer, plan reviewer, um, effective today, and...
For one month.
As a board, we need to look into all of these things that we have come up in conversation tonight, um, you know, whether we do workshops on them, um, I, it's not something that can just be pushed underneath the rug, it needs to be addressed.
Yes. Now that's your motion?
Gonna put a time limit on it for thirty days?
Just interim.
Thirty days.
I, I, I'm good with that, 'cause like, any department head we've hired, we always done an interim, like we did with, uh...
Yeah, probation, or three, a month, or two months.
Chief coach, um, and then we get a feel, and then we make it, we take the interim off, or, like, it would give us time, when Sid gets back to vacation, to, uh, talk to him, and, uh, and see if he, he's available more, and, um, and make us compliant today...
Right, right.
As far as having a building official.
I'll support your motion, Cindy.
I'd like to see it amended for thirty days max, until we talk to Sid.
I'm not amending it, I said I'm not amending it and putting a timeline on it, I don't, I don't know what kind of it, I don't know, yeah.
I mean, we, we have, we have a lot of complaints here and everything, I have not seen anything in black and white, as far as the report, just what we said, just what we've been talking about, I haven't seen any documentation whatsoever, and now we're gonna make a motion...
Well, that's fine, but I'm not gonna sleep at night knowing our building department is open without a building official, not doing it.
And this is just a temporary...
So if someone is in a position...
It's my motion, you guys are more than welcome to turn it down, but that's how I'm gonna sleep tonight.
If we have Mr. Brown in a position to be the acting building official for nine years, why all of a sudden today is he no longer the acting building official?
The board never approved...
Never approved him.
As being an acting billing official. Um, he was approved to be, being the building inspector.
Mm-hmm.
Talked to legal, that's a problem, Gary says that's a problem, um, we need, uh, to appoint a building official.
According to state law.
And unfortunately, considering all the discussion we've had, I don't feel comfortable keeping that the same person that's been doing it, I just don't.
I don't, I don't, I don't, Gary, I don't know Gary, what he's saying about the state law and whatever, but I haven't seen the state law.
Yeah, we're...
Every community has to have a billing official.
Hmm, and the, the, the law...
Well, in essence, in essence, we have one, but he's on vacation.
We, we can all agree that, that there is some significant issues going on, just in this discussion within the department, so I, I, and I'm not in a position, um, of, of, of defense... So I, I, and I'm not in a position, um, of, of, of defense role here. Uh, I'm in a position to make sure that the township is acting accordingly and stepping within our legal means to protect the interest of our general public. And I'm not sure that our current motion does that. That's my only issue.
How, how, how would it, would you change it to satisfy, satisfy your wor, your worry about the public in Clay Township not being safe?
I think we have to validate some of the issues that we've heard today. And I, I would, I would support, uh, tabling this whole overhaul, uh, until our next meeting. And all seven of us could dive in, we could run some significant checks. We have to introspect within our township offices. We have to make sure that we have clear roles, we have clear job descriptions and clear expectations. So we're gonna hire somebody in which may be a duplicate of an existing position.
But there's nothing in the record.
If, if we do that, Chris, I'm gonna make a, following that, I would make a motion, we close our building department for two and a half weeks. Because I don't want any permits being signed without, or reviewed without a building official, a, a, a certified, yes, Clay Township, this is our building official. We, technically, we don't have that right now.
Right.
Um, and it was just brought up to, brought to my attention, and that's why we're here. Um, we need a building official to manage our building department. Point blank.
I, I, well, I agree with that statement.
And otherwise, we would be putting our public safety in jeopardy. Um, we know we have issues with our building department, we have backlog of dangerous buildings that are being addressed.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with not one of those things.
All, all things. So why, I mean, I, why, why don't we appoint an interim and to, to run the building department? Who's here today and will be here tomorrow, and then we can take time and figure it out. And to put a time limit on it, you know, it could be thirty days, it could be less, it could be more, I don't know. I, that's my feeling.